All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your patience. I'd like to call to order the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency/Housing Authority Regular Meeting of October 23, 2017, to order. Please rise and we'll do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
You want to add to this? All right, moving on. Report from closed session, Mr. Rubens.
There's no report from closed session tonight.
Okay, next item is public comment. Person wishing to address the council on matters not on the posted agenda. I have a number of cards tonight, so I'm going to have to sort of be a little strict. We usually give two minutes, so if we could make -- and there's little lights on there, so I'd like to keep it to about two minutes, because I've got about 15 cards here, which technically, we would -- we could cut back, but I'm not going to. I'm going to have everyone speak, but I would appreciate that you keep your comments to two minutes. First person is Kathy Lavezza.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As the mayor said, my name is Kathy Lavezza, and I'm here representing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce as a board member. I also work at PG&E, and I'm here to provide your favorite part of the meeting, the chamber update. So, I just wanted to tell you a couple of things that we've been up to. On September 8, we had access to San Carlos, and we had it at the Maple Street Correctional Center, included a presentation and tour of the new facility in Redwood City. On September 9, the Chamber had their first industrial arts horsepower car show and street fair. It was held in the area of Washington and Bayport, and it featured 150 classic cars. We had some food trucks, some beer, some wine tasting, we had a kids' fun zone, and it was a coordinated effort between the Chamber and the Eastside business owners, and we had over 3,000 attendees at this inaugural event, so we were really pleased with how it turned out. And I know a lot of you were at our 27th Annual San Carlos Art Wine Fair on October 7 and 8, and we feel that we brought in about 50,000 visitors over that two-day period. The weather was perfect, and I think everybody had a great time. On October 19, we want to thank Mayor Griselli for attending the ribbon cutting for Laser Quest on Industrial Road. We were happy that he was there to help welcome Laser Quests to the hood. Some of our update -- upcoming events, so mark your calendars. We have our weekly farmer's market every Sunday from 10 to 2, and that's doing very well, so we thank you for your support of that. On November 8, we have a business mixer at Meets the Eyes Studios, 939 Terminal Way, and that's at 5:30. On November 16, we have a ribbon cutting, Heal, Love, Heal &amp; Thrive, located at 1028 El Camino Real, and that's also at 5:30.
Kathy.
Okay, and so I just want to thank you for being great partners. We really appreciate it. We feel we have a good, strong partnership with you, and we couldn't do it without the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Apologize for interrupting you. Alan Gates.
Mayor and members of the council, I'm here tonight to ask you to consider putting on your agenda a moratorium on the opening of any new gun stores in the city of San Carlos, so that you might also consider potential limitations, zonings, and permits for the opening of such stores. This week, I noticed that a gun store will be opening at 1123 Industrial, directly across the street and within 500 feet of our town's school district office. Turner's Outdoorsman will sell a full complement of handguns, shotguns, and rifles, according to their website, including a vast collection of so-called California-compliant AR-15 semi-automatic rifles. I suggest to the council that regardless of any opinion on this issue of gun control, the city of San Carlos has reached a point where it cannot ignore the issue. In fact, it is possible that this statewide chain has reached a point where it -- the statewide chain may have selected the city of San Carlos because of a lack of such consideration. Our neighboring towns, including Scotts Valley, have done this work and developed standards, including maintaining existing ordinances requiring security cameras and alarm systems, the securing of firearms, and additionally, allowing police chiefs to do security inspections, impose safety measures, and finally, require each new store to acquire a conditional use permit. I ask you to, again, place this on your agenda, a moratorium on any new gun stores, while you take the time to consider this important issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Folks, 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 this isn't a baseball game or a football game, so really appreciate courtesy if the folks, you agree with them, great. If you don't agree with them, whatever, let's all be just like this, if we could. Really appreciate that. Thank you. We do have respect here, and we did -- we've had this for the last five, six, seven years. It's been really good at all these meetings. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you. Next speaker is Laura Palmer-Lohan.
Hi, my name is Laura Palmer-Lohan. I'd like to ask the mayor and the city council to add an agenda item to put a moratorium on new gun stores in San Carlos. We're a very strong and tight community, and I have experienced gun violence firsthand in that when I was 13, a young 16-year-old opened fire on an elementary school right near my middle school, and two lives were taken. And the school evacuated into my middle school. It was very traumatic. And then several years later, another person opened fire on a McDonald's store not too far from my home, killing 21 people and injuring 19 others and ruining vast lives. And I think this is an issue that we should take into careful consideration, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Jane Groden, if I said that right. I apologize if I didn't.
Hi, I'm Jane Groden. I wanted to thank Mark Opert for joining us at a ribbon cutting at Church of Epiphany a few weeks ago for our new labyrinth, but I also wanted to add my supportive Alan and Lauren comments regarding the moratorium on opening more gun stores in town and putting it on the agenda for future consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Aran Piyobison.
Thank you very much for the time and the opportunity to speak today. So, I have to admit, when I packed up work on Friday night, I was not expecting to be spending my Monday evening here on this topic. But what happened Friday night? I heard of a gun shop opening in San Carlos on Industrial -- near -- on Industrial Road near where my daughter and hundreds of other girls and boys take dance lessons at Melodic Remedy. A gun shop a mile away from 2D Fruity, where I hang out with my kids after AYSO soccer games. A gun shop where anyone can buy assault rifles, because we know there's no background checks. There's -- where people with a history of crime, domestic abuse, even people who are on no-fly list can buy guns. A gun shop selling all manners of handguns, assault rifles, a 15-minute walk from White Oaks Elementary School, Arroyo, and Central Middle School. And you give them a few more minutes, they can get to TL also. So, last Friday night, I wasn't expecting to spend Monday here to fight -- to talk about a gun shop, but life comes at you pretty fast, and I think too fast. And we haven't had the time to digest this, to understand the impact we will have on our community, and it's for this reason I'm asking for an immediate moratorium on gun shops in San Carlos, including the proposed one on Industrial, so we, the citizens of San Carlos, can better discuss and understand the repercussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Lynda Rosek.
Hi, I also agree that we need to have a moratorium on this -- getting a new gun store. And I remember there have been two incidents at the exist, and we already have a gun store in San Carlos, and there was an incident where somebody, I guess, came in and was looking at a gun and went out and committed suicide, and I know another time, a truck rammed into the store, and they were able to steal a number of weapons. So, I feel that we need to do something, make sure that something like this can't possibly happen again. We talked about there's a -- the school district is right across the street. Also, I know, one of my friends was at the furniture store, the -- it's kind of an outlet store that's, I think, probably right next -- right in that area, and someone came in and held people hostage, and she was traumatized by it. And the police said that that location is so close to the freeway that it's very easy for somebody to come in and do damage and get out quickly. So, I know REI has issues, so I worry that also with that location, that it would be an easy target for someone to come in, take some guns, and leave. And the last thing we need is more guns being circulated out in the community, and another tragedy like the ones we've been having for so long. So, I agree that we need to look at this carefully and, you know, make sure that we do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Hoffman.
Mayor, councilman, change of subject. Two things. After the public hearing and after you vote, which I'm sure you'll vote sensibly on it, I would propose that you also take up the question of retail sales for marijuana. I think the attitude of banning them is like trying to ban alcohol. We've had a national amendment to the Constitution which failed. In fact, an additional amendment changed that. Prohibition is seldom successful when you're trying to make social change. The second one is something that I have appeared before you twice before, and that is term limits. I know that each one of you feel that you are the best for the job, else you would not have run in the first place. But I think the President of the United States has term limits, governor has term limits in California, representatives or assemblymen and senators have term limits in California. I think probably the wisdom of all of those people should prevail in San Carlos as well. I ask you to put it on a future agenda and limit the term to two four-year segments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your comments. Jackie Yar? I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Jackie Yar. Thank you for your time. I too support the moratorium on any gun -- future gun stores, and true, it is not necessarily a solution with all gun control, but we don't need to add, you know, what you would say, fuel to the fire, so to speak. So, I can say I appreciate if you could put it on the agenda. And also, the way in which the community was made aware of the possible dispensary for marijuana, it was a citywide survey, everyone was informed. This should be brought to the community as well, so everyone knows what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Danielle Lacampagne? Okay, I got that right, I think. Try and...
Good evening. I'm also here for the same reason, for asking for us to discuss and have a civic conversation about the gun store, the proposed gun store. And I think it's our civic duty to have it formalized and put on the agenda in the name of Las Vegas, and Newtown, and Columbine, and all the other awful incidents that happen with guns. This is a very serious issue, and appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. C. Erin Friday.
Hi, good evening. I'm also here to talk about the gun store. San Carlos is a family town, and I think adding a gun store, a second gun store to our town is worth a discussion. I mean, we've had on the agenda, we've had discussions about putting parklets and taking up parking spaces in San Carlos. I think this is such a bigger issue than that, and I would really like the opportunity for the public to speak about it. I know that I personally got an email today that I sent out to about 30 people, and I'm sure the mayor's inbox was pretty full, and so that should be telling on how important this issue is to the people in San Carlos. So, I would really urge you to put this on the agenda, because anything we can do to make it harder for people to have guns, we should be doing as a people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Harville.
Hi, I'm Michael Harville. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I also want to add my support to the suggestion of putting an agenda item on a future meeting around gun control. I believe that statistics show that adding more guns to a community decreases the safety of the people in that community. I also believe it's the city council's duty to try to protect their community, so putting two and two together, I would hope that you'd consider blocking the establishment of a gun store in our city. That would surely lead to more guns being in our city. It's not very complicated. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Natasha Milli.
Hello, I'm Natasha Milli, and I would like to also add my voice to adding it to the agenda, putting some rules around stores that sell weapons in our community, especially in the same -- I was surprised that this hasn't been something that was discussed publicly before. A license was given to this store, considering that it is in a commercial complex where my kids take swim lessons, my kids go to birthday parties, shares the same parking lot with this store. So, I think it is our duty as a town to make sure we have common sense rules around how we have a store who sells weapons -- that sells weapons in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kathy Beard.
Thank you for this time. I would also like to add my voice to support a moratorium on new gun stores while we take the opportunity to discuss the issues and to ask that it be placed on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Karen Paluska.
Hi, I'm Karen Paluska. I would say public speaking was my worst nightmare until I heard there was going to be a gun store quietly opening in our town, and I would say that would be my personal nightmare now. It happened very quietly. All of a sudden, this was information. I felt like nobody I knew, none of my friends, had known that this was happening. It was very -- it felt very surreptitious, and something that, as a community, that really values the community, the strength of families, didn't feel appropriate at all for it to be happening so quietly compared to the other discussion that's happened around other topics that were much less serious. We've had gun violence. My sister-in-law was killed by a gun. We've had gun violence in our family. It's something I take very, very seriously. It's one of the two hot topics for our family that we feel incredibly passionate about, and so that's why I'm here in braving public speaking, because this is important enough to me that I'm going to stand up for this and support the moratorium. A lot more discussion and thinking needs to go on before it...
the agenda, putting some rules around stores that sell weapons in our community, especially in the same, I was surprised that this hasn't been something that was discussed publicly before a license was given to this store, considering that it is in a commercial complex where my kids take swim lessons, my kids go to birthday parties, shares the same parking lot with this store. So I think it is our duty as a town to make sure we have common sense rules around how we have a store who sells weapons, that sells weapons in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for this time. I would also like to add my voice to support a moratorium on new gun stores while we take the opportunity to discuss the issues and to ask that it be placed on a future agenda.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Karen Paluska. I would say public speaking was my worst nightmare until I heard there was going to be a gun store quietly opening in our town, and I would say that would be my personal nightmare now. It happened very quietly, all of a sudden this was information. I felt like nobody I knew, none of my friends had known that this was happening. It was very, it felt very surreptitious, and something that, as a community, that really values the community, the strength of families, didn't feel appropriate at all for it to be happening so quietly compared to the other discussion that's happened around other topics that were much less serious. We've had gun violence, my sister-in-law was killed by a gun, we've had gun violence in our family. It's something I take very, very seriously. It's one of the two hot topics for our family that we feel incredibly passionate about. And so that's why I'm here, and braving public speaking, because this is important enough to me that I'm going to stand up for this and support the moratorium. A lot more discussion and thinking needs to go on before a gun shop opens in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? He speaks.
Hi, I also wanted to say that I'd like for you guys to at least discuss this topic. I'm not sure if there's anything you can do to prevent a store from opening, but if you can, I'd like to hear that conversation, so we can try and keep our city safer. I don't really enjoy gun stores, or three or four of them.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment for items not on the posted agenda? All right. Gentlemen?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I actually like to ask that we agendize the, putting a moratorium on the opening of new gun stores in San Carlos pending our review of whether we ought to make any changes to our rules governing them.
I would agree.
Sounds good to me. I would agree also. Mr. City Manager, can we put that on the next agenda?
We'll place it on your next agenda.
Is that broad enough for discussion, Mr. Rubin, so we can, you have different options and so on?
Yes, I think I understand what the direction of the council is.
All right, great. Any other comments, gentlemen? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So the next, just for identification purposes, the next meeting we're going to have is November...
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth? Is that right? So next, it'll be on the next agenda, November 13th. All right? Thank you. All right, any other comments? Moving on. Six is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually done by one motion, unless there's, someone wants to remove something. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go for it.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
And adopt ordinance number 1524, etc.
I was unprepared. And adopt ordinance number 1524, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos zoning ordinance section 18 dot 41 dot 020, removing founder's tree from the definition of protected trees.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anyone wishing to speak on any item here? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next item is public hearing, item 7A, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending Title V, Title VIII, and Title 18 of the San Carlos municipal code to regulate commercial cannabis activities within the city of San Carlos. Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. California law has changed significantly in terms of commercial cannabis, as well as the personal use of cannabis. These changes have triggered the need for cities throughout the state to start working on local regulations. In April, the City Council discussed cannabis regulations and directed staff to draft rules to allow some cannabis uses while banning others. Following this direction, city staff reached out to the community on shape San Carlos, and the council had a study session in June to review the results and discuss the issues in more detail. In the meantime, staff has been working with SCI Consulting Group, and they're helping a number of cities throughout the state craft regulations and placeworks. On October 2nd, the Planning Commission voted to recommend some cannabis regulations, which are before you this evening. And tonight, we're here to present those regulations to you. And what I'm going to do is introduce John Bliss, President of SCI. He's here to present these regulations to you. We have a number of other folks here this evening that can help to answer questions. We have some folks from, additional folks from SCI, Sonia Ortega and Tanya Sundberg from placeworks, in addition to myself and other key city staff. And with that, John.
Good evening, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Griselli, members of the council, staff, members of the public. Thank you for that introduction. My name is John Bliss, I'm President of SCI Consulting Group. We've been engaged to help the city with drafting an ordinance that's before you this evening. I'm going to touch on a couple of things, then I'm going to pass off to my colleague. Sonia's going to give you a little more detail, and as you know, Sonia, myself, and Tanya from placeworks are available to answer any questions you have. So next slide, please.
Have to do your own work here. We don't, no...
Like the way you run this city, by the way, and other than this, I'm quite incompetent.
I'd love to help you, but I'm the last person to help you there, so.
Forward arrow. I'm doing the forward arrow, I have a feeling I'm pointing in the wrong direction. Is it turned on? It is not. No, it's green, it was on. I'm getting no response. Do I typically point at the... Sorry? Do you have, can you...
Okay, sorry about that, thank you. I'm going to just touch on...
We're sorry that it didn't work.
No, 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 we're going to just touch on a couple of things real quickly. A lot has happened in cannabis regulation here in California. The important thing that I want to get across here is, unlike the other states, California has taken a different path. It's a path, I think is an excellent path, and that is the regulation is shared between the state and local. Every other state has a very strong centralized state level. And so three big, big events happened. Back in 2015, even though medical had been legal since 1996, we finally got it right with this MRSA, which set apart some, set in place a number of regulations for medical, but allowed the, a kind of a dual role between the local agency and the state in terms of medical. Then in November of 2016, as you know, the AUMA was passed by California voters, about 65% support here in San Carlos, and that did a similar regulation for recreational or non-medical. Now fortunately, the drafters of AUMA were quite familiar with MRSA, but there were some differences, and those are all being resolved in what we call MAKERSA, believe it or not, and that's SB 94, and that continues to work itself out. The regulation at this point is mature, it's good, I, we would give it a B+, A-, and it allows you a lot of local authority. Also, I would like to mention that there was the shape poll here in San Carlos, which showed 80% of the respondents supported legalized cannabis. So, and then we'll just, you can just use the buttons down there. So, real quickly, what do I mean when I say local government authority? There's three things that you all need to think about. The first two are very similar, they really have to do with personal cultivation, that's for personal use, it's something that Californians voted, is something that, that local Californians should have a protected right to do, and you all can reasonably, reasonably regulate but not ban personal indoor cultivation. That's the six plants per household, that's for personal use. You can also, that can, that's, that's a guaranteed right, if you will, for Californians within their house. In their backyard or outdoor personal grow, you can regulate or ban it completely. And then there are five main activities, commercial cannabis activities, that you all can consider and regulate, and those are retail, including delivery, cultivation, manufacturing, testing, and distribution. So that's kind of a big picture background. I'm going to pass on now to my colleague, Sonia Ortega. She's going to give you a little more detail about the ordinance you're looking at tonight.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as previously stated, the city of San Carlos did conduct three study sessions in March, April, and June. From that director, from that feedback, directions that we were given from City Council in the past was to ban all commercial activities within 600 feet of residential and mixed-use zoning, to draft regulations for manufacturing, distribution, testing, nurseries, and microbusiness, and at this time, to ban cannabis retail establishments. October 2nd was the night that we presented the zoning amendments to Planning Commission. Upon their recommendation and approval, allowable uses would be allowed within the general commercial industrial, industrial arts, light industrial, heavy industrial, and industrial professional areas of the city. Title 18 zoning amendments, you'll see before you guys, different ones, essentially some of the key ones related to cannabis, was adding new sections that regulated commercial cannabis business, as well as the personal cannabis cultivation. As John previously mentioned, you cannot ban indoor cultivation, and the city of San Carlos at this point, the regulations are written towards, they are allowed to grow indoor and outdoor on a personal level, however, it cannot be visible from the right-of-way. Again, just other amendments that they made, clarifications to cannabis dispensaries, collectives. Obviously, there's sections within the codes that do, or that did pertain specifically to medical marijuana, and now with the recreational being allowed, that changed some of the vocabulary that was used there. Overall, Title VIII, health and safety, Chapter VIII specified collective cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana regulations. There is now a process that is in place, what we call a commercial cannabis business permit, prior to any business coming into the city in the allowable areas. They will need zoning clearance, and they will have an application that has to be submitted to the city, there's a process for that. Operational standards that are written within the ordinance pertain to security. There has to be live footage that can be accessible by fire, or police chief, or any other law enforcement that is assigned. Surveillance, like I said, the feed should be live and available for them as well for review. There should be adequate lighting indoor and outdoor. No visible signs that'll make it attractive to know that it is in any way a cannabis business. Odor control from within is part of the operation plan that they will have to submit, as well as maintain, you know, same graffiti, no traffic, or, excuse me, no trash or littering, like any other business, to limit nuisances in San Carlos. This is, all the sections that have been added now to Title VIII. I do want to spend a little bit of time discussing some of the highlighted ones. These essentially are the regulations for proposed dispensary, excuse me, for proposed commercial activities within the city. All of them are to comply with state regulations. Some of the things that we discussed are like odor control, the nuisances and such. Specifically, one of the things that we want to talk about here in San Carlos is going to be the retail aspect of it. At the moment, if we are choosing to ban delivery, or excuse me, ban retail services, that also bans delivery to an extent. The SB 94 defines a delivery as coming from a licensed brick and mortar retail. So these delivery vehicles need to be able to pick that product up from a licensed retail dispensary. If we're not allowing those at the moment within the city of San Carlos, the question then becomes, can deliveries enter in to the area from another local licensed facility? And you're, in here in San Mateo County, I mean, there's cities that have done it both ways. Some of them have chosen to completely ban delivery and ban retail. Some have banned retail locations but have allowed delivery within city limits. SB 94 does not allow you to ban deliveries from going through public right, public ways, excuse me, roadways. So that's another thing that essentially just falls on local enforcement and how the city wants to handle that. Title V, business taxes, license regulations, was almost, was also amended, just to clarify that the CCVP is required prior to issuing any kind of license or permit to the city. Staff does recommend that the City Council introduce the ordinance amending Title V, Title VIII, and 18. November 13th would be the final reading of the ordinance, and at that time, we would also present to you regulatory fees, cost recovery to the city, to monitoring all these different activities. If everything was to be approved on November 13th, as early as December 13th, the city could then begin taking business applications, and the state would issue their permits beginning January 1st. And at this time, we would take any questions at the council, which they has.
Okay, questions? Mr. Johnson.
So thank you for the presentation. You spoke about that the, the law prevents banning delivery on public right-of-way. So what, so the way you put it, I think, is that it would have to be a local enforcement issue. Could you just give me a little bit more color, and maybe, I see the, our police chief in the back, any thoughts on, on how, the pros and cons of trying to regulate delivery? If you could just give me a little bit more color.
Absolutely, and essentially, that's, that's really where, you know, it's, it's how far is your law enforcement, what are the resources that are available to them? You know, do they have the staff, do they have the funds? Are we, are we talking about, you know, are you, every vehicle that drives through city of San Carlos, if that car has picked up product from a licensed dispensary, and they need to access your road to get to their final destination, their patient, their delivery, I mean, if a, if a law enforcement was to, at that point, pull them over, and there's no, you know, tagged vehicle, so there's no way to know essentially what's in there, but if for some reason that was discovered, and they have their, you know, state-presented paperwork, and they know that they have to go, that, at that point, the enforcement officer would just have to, you know, allow them to proceed unless law enforcement would have any other...
So, so then how have cities proposed to ban delivery at all? Is it at the doorstep, or?
It's a very great issue, I mean, I'm not, you know, there's, it's, there's no real black or white answer to it. You can, in your city code, write that they are banned, but it's really a conversation with enforcement on how you're, how far you're willing to go to enforce that.
But, I mean, do you see any, what I am hearing you say is, there is no practical way to ban delivery? Is that...
No steps put in place at this moment. I mean, I don't know of any city that has necessarily mastered it, per se, to answer you, yeah? That I know of, unless you want to add anything.
I think that's exactly right. We don't have a great answer for you, because we don't know, and a number of cities that are working with us are wrestling with it right now. No one's come up with the silver bullet.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Obert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, folks, good presentation. A few questions here. One has to do with, and I think I see the language in here, but I just want to confirm I understand, I understand it, because there's a difference between federal law as it regards cannabis sale, cannabis sales, and state law now as it regards cannabis sales. If, if we permit a wholesaling operation in San Carlos, and, I don't know, somehow the feds look to sue us, go after us, because we've allowed this, my reading of the language implies that we get to lay off that liability on whoever we gave the permit to. In other words, that we're not responsible for the costs associated with defending that kind of suit. I just want to make sure I understand that. That may be a question more for Greg than...
I guess I should, you know, before I even pass that on, let you know, you're not the only one with that concern, you know, because at the end of the day, that is obviously federal law, and, you know, state law and the regulations that we're looking to set in place, just decriminalize the activity and essentially, you know, remove it, correct? So, Greg?
Yeah, section 8.09.160 of the ordinance has very robust liability and hold harmless provisions, including a duty to defend the city in the event there's any type of enforcement action brought by government agencies, state or federal, in the event of a change in the law. And we also have, for development permits, we also have indemnity separately, so we have a very general indemnity provision with a defense requirement, and then we have a specific for cannabis businesses.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Just, and this may also be for Greg, just as an observation, and I tried to find my notes from earlier in the day when I was reviewing this, disappeared somehow, but I tried to re-find it here tonight and could not. It looked to me like there was a little bit of an ambiguity in the language governing residential personal cultivation, that in one place, it talks about how the plants can't be visible from the public right-of-way, and in another place, it separately says, and you can't grow them outdoor in your yard, you have to grow them indoors. But the part that said not visible from the public right-of-way left me with the impression when I first read it as, okay, if I grew to my backyard and it wasn't visible from the street, then it was allowed. So I'm just mentioning it, it may be a cleanup thing that you want to come back with at some point. I'm not proposing to change it tonight, but, and let's see, I think I had...
I mean, I think sometimes in the drafting of the ordinance, we try to cover all situations, and I think there, if someone had a, you know, a big picture window or a covered patio with, that was all visible from the right-of-way, I think it, that provision that you're talking about would address that scenario. So I'm thinking of a solarium room that someone might have on the back of their house that might be oriented in a way that the public right-of-way, it could be seen, so you wouldn't want to have them growing in that.
Oh, I see, okay, fair enough. Again, I, if there is any ambiguity, I will leave it to you to resolve if you feel it's necessary. The last question I have, kind of dovetails off of what question Cameron asked, which is that, on the enforcement side, if we were to consider banning deliveries in town, I frankly would like to hear from the chief, if that's okay, about what his thoughts are about, if we were to task you with doing that, how would you go about doing it?
Good evening, Council. Specifically, what ban were you talking about?
One of the, we were present, council was presented with two different options regarding the delivery of retail, of delivery of cannabis to homes, presumably. And in one option, all deliveries made in San Carlos are banned, you're just, wherever it comes from, you're not allowed to deliver it someplace in San Carlos. The other one... The other one basically allows deliveries, except they obviously can't come from a retail store in San Carlos, because we ban those separately. So, my question is, if we were to go the route of banning all deliveries, you would be the guy in charge of enforcing that. Have you given thought to how you'd do that?
I have, and it's been short, because I really don't know. You know, I don't know how you pick those cars out, and, so, it's going to be very tough. I think what'll happen, like a lot of code issues, it'll be probably a complaint basis, where, hey, I know Jimmy Jones, he's delivering pot, he doesn't have a license to deliver pot, this is his car, this is where he lives, and we take the deal from that way. Otherwise, there's really no way that I can think of it.
Okay, so, an exception, uh, exception basis?
Yeah, probably a complaint.
Complaint basis is what you said.
Complaint basis, correct.
Complaint basis. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
Greg? I might want to stay up there.
Okay. At least be close to class, right?
So, I have a similar question, except it's been shown to me a map of San Carlos that shows deliveries and where they take place in San Carlos. I think that was presented to me by someone who's related to the industry, and so maybe they're privy to that information, but the sheriff's department is not privy to that kind of information?
You know, if they, if there is a place that shows, you know, where people, if people can get deliveries, I don't, I believe that the ordinance would not prohibit deliveries from other cities into San Carlos. Is that correct?
A proposed version.
There is a proposed, proposed version that would, yeah.
In that case, we would have that information that way. But I also want to say, too, with respect to, when I have input onto this ordinance, I've always asked people to try and think of the ordinance as, you know, one of the reasons this law passed is because there was a desire to not have law enforcement overly involved in the enforcement of marijuana laws, that there was a sense that we were already overly involved. And so, my input at the staff level to this report has been, let's do what we can to make sure that we don't actually increase our involvement in the enforcement of marijuana, when the intention was to not be involved in the enforcement of marijuana ordinances. So, you know, this is a, this is a city ordinance, and in many city ordinances, code enforcement handles it, and it could be a code enforcement issue. When we're talking about the delivery of marijuana, we're talking about, you know, I mean, the city has the right to regulate it, but we're talking about the delivery of a lawful product, and so...
Well, lawful according to state law.
According to the state law.
But not federal law.
So, that's, you know, we could do that, it would be something we would really have to, whether I'm, we're going to pull out a map and start picking out houses of who's getting delivered, and then start doing an enforcement operation based on that. Is that what we want the police department to do?
There also could be situations, though, like there is with other items, that if you, for instance, you get pulled over on a fix-it ticket item, and the officer walks up to your vehicle, and you have an open container of alcohol in the car, you've got other issues.
Correct.
Could, if we do create such an ordinance, we could be, I'll say, passive about it in that sense, but still have it be an issue, correct?
Yeah, I mean, one where the enforcement would be more complaint-based or something like that versus proactive?
No, I'm not saying complaint-based. I'm saying it could be based on, you make a traffic stop for whatever, has nothing, you don't, you're not suspecting this guy's making a marijuana delivery, you just are stopping him because maybe they made a turn without using their signal. And then you discover, oh, he's got 15 bags of marijuana in his car, he's making a delivery. Now, you've got another item on the, that you're writing a ticket over.
If we, if we made it unlawful, then we would have a city ordinance violation that we could enforce if we knew that he was delivering to San Carlos.
Right, and that wouldn't put any extra burden on the police department. It would just be another item.
It probably, it probably would not. I mean, it would just be another citation.
Right, okay, thank you.
If I could add some clarification there. The difficulty in the situation you described, as we've analyzed it at the staff level, is that when you're talking about deliveries, A, we know it has to be coming from an already state-licensed retail location. Obviously, that wouldn't be from inside San Carlos, assuming that the ordinance that's proposed passes tonight. So, the delivery would be coming from an outside licensed legal source. The state law specifically says that those licensed locations can deliver through your community. So, you'd actually have to, just because they were pulled over in your jurisdiction, you would have to know, the officer would have to know the final destination of that delivery, which they wouldn't have any way of knowing, and the driver wouldn't have to tell them. So, when we broke it down that way, what, what we found, talking to PD, is there simply wouldn't be anything we could do, so long as they were coming from someplace that was licensed.
So, I need a, something to be just clarified, then, is, the way I put it, you know, you find bags of marijuana, well, maybe that's old school, because if it's coming from one of these certified places, it's probably in a box or something, right? So, regardless of what we do tonight, if one of your officers, one of the sheriff's deputies pulls somebody over, and they've got, you know, 15 bags of marijuana, you know, in little baggies, that's a citation right there, right? Because it's not coming from a certified or outfit. Am I correct, or are we changing anything by that?
I think what City Manager set up was a delivery from a certified licensed...
Yes, he did.
Dispensary, and if that's the case, then they have the right to go into town. If they said, for example...
What I'm setting up is a situation where one of your officers, again, makes a traffic stop, and then, you know, on the, on the passenger seat or in the backseat, they notice the guy's got, you know, a bunch of baggies of marijuana. He's not certified, he's not a certified business by any means, he's just the guy, you know, dealing in marijuana.
Right.
Nothing we do tonight would change that being illegal, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to know. I have one other question, but it's not for Greg.
Okay, go ahead, you can ask somebody else.
I don't think El Camino is included on the map where this is permitted, is that correct? And if so, why? Or, better, why not? Sorry.
One of the, one of the restrictions we have received as direction is to restrict residential, 600 feet from any residential district, including mixed-use, because mixed-use can include residential. So, the El Camino corridor, to a certain extent, would fall within that buffer zone where it would not be allowed.
But then, we do allow it on the east side, and there's housing on the east side. What you're saying is we have some kind of, what, five, some buffer zone around the...
Yeah, this map kind of shows, and if you see here in the greater east side, the residential district there, there is a buffer that also exists around those homes by 600 feet.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I think this is probably for Sonia, but I'm not really sure. You mentioned odor control. How is that achieved?
A lot of these businesses, part of the operating plan that they submit, and it's a state requirement as well, I'm looking at John for the exact name, I can't think. It's a carbon filtration system that they use. So, essentially, there's devices that are set in place that'll take this air out, and a lot of times, these dispensaries will have, or even the buildings themselves, it's per door chambers. So, once you close one door, the air that's been cleaner that's in there, you close it, and it can no longer carry on with you. So, there's very strict, I guess, policies as to where they're placed, as the doors, and how people access these facilities, and where they come in and out. I don't know if you have anything else to add, but...
I would just add, odor control is pretty sophisticated. We use it a lot at sewer treatment plants, and essentially, you're taking the, the air, the oxygen that's in the environment that has the odor, and before it goes, it's exhausted, it goes through carbon, and that carbon is pulling out that odor. And so, I've been to a lot of them, there's a lot of cultivators, that's where a lot of the odor is, in small warehouses near the Oakland Coliseum. And you can stand right outside, and you don't, and you can't smell anything, but you go in, and there's a big, heavy infrastructure, stainless steel ducting and stainless steel units that pump it through carbon, and that pulls that odor right out.
And without that, would you, you'd be able to smell it inside, even though it's not being smoked or burned?
Cannabis is very seasonal, and so, when it's flowering, it gives on a very strong odor. And I recently drove from Wyrica down the Highway 5, and I was shocked, this was about a month ago, because I'm a real naysayer, people say, "You can smell it," and I said, "No, you can't, come on, there's not that much." And I was shocked how strong the odor is. So, the outdoor cultivation, it's, certain times of year, it puts off a very, very strong odor. But the mechanisms are available, they're not cheap, to pull that odor right out.
Where was that, that you were driving?
So, I was Wyri, I was up near the Oregon border, Wyrica, so I was going down, I think it was around, we first did it and smelled it north of Redding, and then, I think, south of Red Bluff, which is not really a cannabis area, so I was surprised, but it's very, very powerful.
Okay. I always thought that that was just alfalfa or something.
Yeah, you know what? It's funny you say it. It was nighttime, and I think it was nighttime we were driving, so we couldn't see anything, but it really, I said, you know, "That smells just like cannabis," and it must have been. So, it's a very strong odor crop up there.
All right, I only have one other question. I met with a representative, probably the same one that maybe some of the other council members met with, and he indicated that the mail-order business is, you cannot order marijuana through a mail-order and have it delivered via the U.S. Postal Service, or FedEx, or that sort of thing. All right, so that's not something that we would need to worry about. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Olber, last question?
Gee, what if I had two? No, I'm just kidding. Well, there we go. Greg Rubin's question, just in the discussion Matt was having with, with the chief, sparked my curiosity. If we ban deliveries anywhere in San Carlos, would that be a criminal or an administrative violation if somebody violated it? Because the chief mentioned that you could view it as a code enforcement thing, and not necessarily something the sheriff's department would be involved with at all.
The zoning side of it, I think, could either be a criminal, or civil, or code enforcement, but Section 8, which is the permitting, I don't believe that would be subject to administrative citation. I think that would be a criminal citation.
Thank you.
Misdemeanor or infraction.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. This is a public hearing. I have one speaker card, William Graham. You have two minutes.
I'll make it fast. Thank you for having me. I've been a consultant to a lot of the cannabis operations in, the medical operations in California, Colorado, and Canada for the last 10 years, so I can probably help answer a lot of questions regarding the operation of the large professional facilities. But I wanted to speak tonight. I have a biotechnology company, I do plant tissue culture primarily for grapes. I was a San Carlos business from 2010 to about 2012, and I've been a San Carlos County resident for 20 years. And my interest is in operating one of these nurseries under this license, and I only require about 4,000 square feet of indoor space. It's not a crop that's a concern of smell, it's easy to secure, it's business-to-business, so there's no cash transactions. It's primarily for contract growth to specific growers, so the customers are already there. And I would really like to work in the community that I've been in for 20 years, and besides, we have a fantastic opportunity to bring a crop to the community that has not been explored by biotechnology yet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, I'm urging a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen? What's your...
Do you want an introduction of the ordinance?
Whatever you want to do.
All right.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, there was a modified ordinance that was handed out. The title is the same, there's just a, one, it changed to one of the recitals, and it's recital, let me see which one I've got here. It's the fourth, whereas concerning federal law and the interpretation of a case, I just wanted to make sure it was accurately reflected.
Nothing we have to repeat, though? Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, okay. I'll move to introduce ordinance number...
1525.
1525, an ordinance of the City of San, City Council and the City of San Carlos, amending Title V, Business Taxes License and Regulations. Title VIII, Health and Safety, and Title 18, Zoning of the San Carlos Municipal Code to Regulate Commercial Cannabis Activities Within the City of San Carlos, with Option 1, allowing delivery service from, delivery services from outside San Carlos to deliver cannabis to customers in San Carlos.
I have a second. All right, moved in second. Discussion?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to make a point similar to something I said the last time we were giving staff direction here. I'm actually going to vote against this, this motion. I actually am fine with all of it, except for the fact that I still think that we're being a little bit short-sighted, and a little bit sort of odd in our thinking about banning retail shops in the appropriate, well-regulated locations in town. And the reason I say that is because, in particular, given that the motion involves allowing the delivery of cannabis to people's homes, it seems to me like we're going to affect, whatever the downsides may be about having increased cannabis consumption in the community, whatever those are, we're going to have those and not have any kind of income offset to help deal with the issues associated with that. Now, I'm not saying I necessarily think there will be lots of problems, because I hope there won't be, but it just strikes me as odd that we're allowing this and saying, "No, but no retail stores." So, that's why I'm going to be voting against it. I just want folks to know that, otherwise, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond briefly, and I want to, would like staff to maybe clarify this. Is there any prohibition on us coming back at some point in the future and allowing retail sales?
No, that would be within the purview of the City Council.
Okay. Mr. Grocott?
I'm wondering if council would, despite what we were told by planning about the reasons for keeping it off El Camino. From what I hear from these experts is, it's so regulated, and it's so clean, if you will, these facilities. I don't, I personally don't see an issue with it being on the El Camino. This gentleman said 4,000 square feet. I think there's buildings on El Camino that could accommodate that, and so long as all the regulations are in place on, you know, air quality, and police, and so forth, I just, to me, the reason I ask that, if anybody else is interested, is because I just don't like the idea, the visual this sets up, that it's okay to put this on the east side, but it's not okay to have it anywhere on the west side, and it's not okay to have it on the El Camino, where we have a lot of businesses. And it, I'm saying this from a standpoint of, I'm not necessarily, I don't like what California's done regarding making marijuana available for just recreational use. As a cancer survivor, I've read enough about cannabis oil and the use of it in fighting cancer, and I agree with this gentleman back here, who's in the biotech industry and plant research, that, you know, this, for a long time, marijuana has been ostracized, and for no good reason, I don't think. I think it should be researched and used for medical purposes, and it's being held back because of the criminal aspect of it in the past. But just getting back to this idea of the El Camino, I don't see any reason why not to have it on the El Camino. When you move into a mixed-use building, you know that there's, I mean, look at it now. If you move into an apartment building or a condo on El Camino, you've got restaurants nearby, you've got restaurants that serve alcohol nearby, you've got all kinds of things nearby. That's the game you're playing when you buy a home in a, you know, a dense environment like that, and it is what it is. So, why are we prohibiting cannabis from having businesses there?
Okay. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob. Well, Matt, I'm kind of glad to hear you say that, because I was in favor of retail sales all along, and I don't, and I...
I'm not, I'm not saying retail sales, I'm saying, like, for instance, this gentleman's talking about a production, or research, or whatever. Yeah.
Allowing that along, not the retail, I'm sorry, I misinterpreted it.
Not the retail part of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No problem. Jeff, you wanted to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, Al can jump in here, but I think the issue that we've got is, is, goes beyond this particular ordinance, that the types of businesses that you're allowing, manufacturing, distribution, growing and whatnot, aren't currently allowed on El Camino anyway. And so you'd actually, you know, imagine we're talking about wheat instead of cannabis for a minute. You couldn't have those businesses on El Camino now. And so you'd have to actually rezone, or redefine the zone for El Camino. So it's a, it's a larger land use issue. We could certainly do that, but we couldn't, I don't, adding that language to tonight's ordinance wouldn't accomplish that.
All right. Okay. So any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call the question. Any comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Gerselli?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to item 8, new business. Consideration of adopting resolution, adopting policies to guide the below-market rate housing program eligibility and preference criteria. Mr. Sivee, again.
Good evening once again, Mayor, members of the City Council. San Carlos, along with many other cities, established eligibility requirements and preference criteria for BMR units and wait lists. Currently, we only have one eligibility criterion and two preference criteria. As a considerable amount of BMR units are anticipated to be available over the next few years, staff is recommending that the council adopt a more detailed criteria and more clearly and fairly guide us moving forward. So the criteria that we're presenting this evening for your consideration has been vetted by the City Council Housing Subcommittee, Mayor Gerselli, and Councilmember Collins over the course of a number of meetings. And what I'm going to do now is turn this presentation over to a consultant with BAE. Her name is Stephanie Hager. She's Vice President of BAE. And then following her presentation, will again be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and the public. My name is Stephanie Hager, and I am a Vice President at BAE Urban Economics. We did some analysis for the city related to the city's BMR program, and specifically the eligibility and preference criteria for the waitlist for these units. We started looking into this a few months back. The city asked us to look at some specific items related to eligibility and preference criteria. When we talk about eligibility criteria, those are criteria that households must meet in order to be able to access BMR units. So that's sort of a go-no-go. If you're, if you meet those criteria, you're eligible. If you don't, you're not. Preference criteria are factors that affect a household's position on the waitlist. So households that don't meet those criteria are still eligible for the waitlist and BMR unit access more generally. But households that do meet those preference criteria would be further up on the waitlist than the households that don't. So we took a case study approach and looked at what some other cities that also operate BMR programs are doing related to these specific topics. And then we formed some recommendations related to what those other cities are doing, as well as some factors that are specific to San Carlos. This is a summary of our four major recommendation areas. I'll talk about all of these in more detail. But they relate to defining the preference for residents on, on the BMR waitlist that the city already has enacted. Similarly, defining the worker preference that the city currently has in place. And then adopting eligibility criteria related to minimum household sizes, and also related to the amount of assets that a household can have and still be eligible for the BMR So I'll talk about resident preference first. The City of San Carlos currently does offer a preference for current San Carlos residents. The current policies don't have any specific criteria to define what that means. We found that among the case study jurisdictions that we looked at, this resident preference is really, is very common, practically universal. In a lot of cases, though, there are some specific guidelines for how long somebody needs to have lived in the city in order to qualify for that preference. So we're recommending that the city define criteria to say that, that in order to, to get that resident status on the waitlist, the household has to have at least one member who's lived in San Carlos for at least one year. And we're also recommending that that same preference be extended to former residents who moved out of San Carlos no more than one year ago. And the reason for these recommendations is to clarify these existing preferences that the city already has adopted. And then also to provide, the, the reason for, the number two there on the recommendations is to provide an opportunity for households that may have recently been priced out, as housing prices are going up all around the Bay Area, to maybe have an opportunity to return through BMR units that are more affordable. Second item is worker preference. Again, this is a preference that San Carlos already has. But at this point in time, there's no specific criteria to define what that means. Again, this is pretty similar to what a lot of other cities do. But many cities have adopted some guidelines to try and make it so that there's some specific criteria attached to what it means to work in the city. What we're recommending is that you define somebody who works in San Carlos as somebody who works in the city for at least 19 hours per week on average. Again, this is to clarify the existing preference category that the city already implements. And the reason why we chose that 19 hours a week, I know it's sort of a funny number, is that some employers have benefits kick in at 20 hours per week, and so they'll have some workers who they cap at 19 in order to avoid the benefit obligation. So we, we're recommending that you extend that preference to workers who may be capped at that 19-hour-per-week limit, but are mostly working part-time in San Carlos at least. So the third item is minimum household size. San Carlos currently does not have any restrictions related to the minimum household size for households that occupy BMR units. So you could have a one-person household in a three-bedroom unit. The other cities that we looked at all have adopted some kind of criteria to say that in order to live in a three-bedroom unit, you have to have some minimum number of people in your household. We're recommending one person per bedroom. So a two-bedroom unit would need to have at least two people living in that household. A three-bedroom unit would need to have at least three. You could have more. And the main idea behind this is to prevent your BMR units from being underutilized by having very few people in some of those larger units. The last item is asset thresholds. I'm going to talk about this one in a little bit more detail. So the city does not currently have any criteria related to the amount of assets that a household has while maintaining eligibility for the BMR waitlist. So as long as, as long as a household meets the income requirements for a BMR unit, they could have any amount of assets and still be eligible for units, even if those assets are sufficient to purchase a home. We found that a lot of other cities that we looked at have adopted some restrictions on the amount of assets that a household can have in order to still be eligible. And we formed a set of recommendations for how the City of San Carlos may want to structure considerations of assets when considering eligibility for BMR units. So what we're suggesting is that assets that are, any assets up to $60,000 would have no impact on a household's eligibility for BMR units. Between $60,000 and $350,000, 10 to 15% of that asset value would be added on to a household's eligibility income. And then there would be an absolute cap of $350,000 in assets that a household could have, after which they become ineligible for BMR unit, for the waitlist or unit eligibility. And the purpose for these asset limits is really to try and target the city's BMR units to those households that would be unable to buy a market-rate home, and really would have limited choices in the market-rate home-buying environment. And so a BMR unit may really be their only option. So I'm going to talk a little bit about where those numbers came from. The first $60,000 exemption is based on about what it would take for a household to purchase a BMR unit, considering closing costs and down payment. Plus, we're allowing a little bit of a cushion for some emergency reserve. We'll talk about this a little bit more in a minute, but that $60,000 threshold is actually pretty high in terms of the amount of households that are at the low, very low, and even moderate income level that would be able to accumulate that amount of assets. So to the extent that households at those income levels are able to do that, we want to try to exempt that in order to allow them to have money for future emergency home repairs, or if there's an emergency medical expense. These are households that, because they're relatively, they have relatively low incomes, they're going to have a hard time accumulating more assets over time. And so we want to make sure that if there is a major unexpected expense, that they have the ability to retain some of that emergency cushion, because they're going to have a harder time building that up over time. The 350K absolute threshold correlates to the amount of down payment that many low-income households would need in order to afford to buy a market-rate home, using a combination of their income for mortgage payments, and then their assets for a down payment. And that's based on condo sale prices at the 25th percentile in San Mateo County. And then between $60,000 and $350,000, the proportion that we counted towards eligibility income is meant to maintain eligibility for households that cannot afford a market-rate home through a combination of their income and assets. But once they do reach that level, then they would be pushed out of the eligibility threshold. Quick example about how this would work for a sample household. A three-person household with an annual income of $80,000, their AMI level for, in San Mateo County, would be low income. If they had $60,000 in assets, that would have no impact on their eligibility. If they had $150,000 in assets, that would add $9,000 to their eligibility income, because it's 10% of the difference between 150,000 and 60,000. And that would shift them into the moderate income eligibility category. So they would still be eligible, but at the moderate income level. And that $150,000 would be enough to make it so that they could afford that moderate income unit. At $350,000, they would no longer be eligible for BMR units, but that would be enough of a down payment for them to make on a home in order to make their monthly, their monthly mortgage payments affordable on their $80,000 per year income, market, for a market-rate We took a look to see what kind of impact this would have on the households that are on BMR, on the city's BMR waitlist. The city provided us with that information, scrubbed of any identifying information about specific households. And so we looked at the households that provided enough information on their income and assets for us to be able to determine what impact this would have, which was a little bit more than half of the, of all the households on the waitlist. And of those, there was very little impact of, of these thresholds. So 95% of the households in that group had less than $60,000 in assets, and so would not be impacted at all. About 3% had less than, had more, had more than $60,000 in assets, but it still wasn't enough to impact their eligibility in any way, because it was only a slight amount above the 60,000. 2% would have been impacted by the asset thresholds in, in some way. More than half of those would still be eligible, but they would be bumped into a higher income level. And then the remainder would be ineligible. In all of those cases, we did look at how the assets that they had reported would compare to the price of buying a home in San Carlos and in San Mateo County. And it, between a combination of their income and assets, they would be able to afford market-rate homeownership. So this is the same slide that I showed you toward the beginning, just to refresh your memories on what we talked about. So we have the resident preference definition, the worker preference definition, the minimum household size of one person per bedroom, and then the potential to consider household assets when considering eligibility for the BMR waitlist. And that's it for me. I'll be here if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Olbert, you have questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good presentation. My questions are actually, at least in some cases, probably best answered by the subcommittee members as well. So I'll leave it up to whoever wants to, wants to chime in. One basic question I had about the scheme process that we use, the various thresholds and, and whatnot tests, is there like a, is it, is it a point system kind of thing, where if you meet more categories, you are higher up on the list? Or is it that they're prioritized? And so if you, if you fail to meet some really important one, you're out, regardless of how you stack up on the other ones?
So the, the way that we have been sort of discussing this is really just, you have a preference or you don't. Cities do structure these in a lot of different ways. Some may provide, you know, so there are, there are some that do point systems, where they might say, "You get one point if you're a resident, another point if you work here, too." And then if you're, so if you're both, then you would, you know, rank higher on the preference You know, we, we've sort of been discussing this more as, you know, you have the worker or the resident preference, or-
So it's more like, it's, if, if you qualify for a preference, you have preference?
Yes.
And it's not like, oh, this person has four preferences, and this person has one?
Right.
It's just a preference?
Yeah. I mean, we're really only talking about two different preference categories. So at most, if you wanted to think of it that way, you could have a one, or a two, or a zero.
Okay. Another question I had, even though it, I know it doesn't affect a lot of people, I, I saw in the write-up that assets in a retirement account are excluded from the analysis. And the question I guess I have there is, that makes sense to me for somebody who's kind of of working age. But the whole point of having retirement assets is that most of us eventually plan to stop working, and the retirement assets are actually therefore income at that point. So it's almost like at some age, it's switch, it ought to switch back and say, "No, that really ought to be counted as to whether or not you have sufficient income."
Yeah. So the, the assets and income interplay does get sort of complex in that way. There are various types of, of assets that do contribute to household income. So, you know, if you had, you know, dividends from stocks, you know, that's sort of another, you know, the sum of these assets do provide income over time, and, and retirement is one of those. So to the extent that a household has assets that are generating income on a regular basis for that household, the city would count those as part of the household income.
That's a, okay. That's a nice segue into another question I have, which is, when we talk about income, how do you actually define income? Is it somebody hands you their tax returns, "So this is what my income was from last year," or do you use some different metric?
So in our current process that we have established, when we have a unit that is to be filled, what we do is we go through our waitlist and determine who has preference and who's at the top of the list, because it's first come, first served. If you put your name on the list, you know, 10 years ago, you're at the very top. And then if you still have a preference, it's offered to you first, and then down the list until you are qualified. And at the time of being qualified for the particular unit, then that person is referred to a broker that the city engages with to sell the unit. And that broker qualifies and receives all of the evidence to support what they've claimed is what their taxes are. So they'll essentially get tax returns submitted, and will, they'll have to report their assets as well.
That's fine. The point I want to make here, for the benefit of everybody, is tax returns are a particular view of income, not necessarily what somebody's income is. Speaking from personal experience, I had a number of years after I stopped working when my reported taxable income was actually fairly low, but the actual income that I thought I had was much higher than that, because of the way income is counted. It's not, strictly speaking, the same for tax and not. So that's, I'd ask you guys to think about that going forward. The, the other question I had, which probably is for the subcommittee members, is I noticed that we're talking about putting in a preference where you have to, you have to have, or you have, get a preference if you've lived in San Carlos for a year. When I saw that, the question I had is, I tend to somewhat associate BMR housing with folks who are kind of at an entry-level stage of life, which often means that they are also entry-level to the community, too. They're, they're new. Okay? It's almost like, well, you, you'd get a preference if you were here, but you can't live here because you can't afford to live here. So, sorry, that doesn't apply. So I, you see, it's almost like a catch-22. So you guys talk about that, and how'd you evaluate it?
Yeah, we did. And I think that Stephanie and Mark, right, yeah, can, can maybe add some context to. There are cases where people lived here, and something happened. They lost their job, they had to move out. And, but they were longtime residents, and they really wanted to stay here. But they, they had to leave, and they would really like to come back, and they meet all the criteria. So we talked about, you know, we ought to give those people preference, or at least give them a priority in that, in that, whatever that waiting list is that, that we're putting together. That, that's my recollection, recollection of it. If you guys want to add anything, or Bob, if you want to add anything.
Was that your question? I thought it was the opposite way. Was that your-
I had, I was going to say, I had a somewhat different- I, I had, I was going to say, I had a somewhat different question. So if you'd like to chime in.
No, I think the question you asked is, why did you put one-plus years? Why did, yeah, exactly. I think it's a kind of a situation where we just felt that people should, we didn't want Joe Smith coming in off the street, I think. That was basically it. I think we, we felt we wanted to have people who lived in San Carlos and that's, that's why we, they're residents and if they're here, then hopefully they'd be here for more than a year. And it was, it was an arbitrary, you know, idea, but that's what we came up with.
And by the way, I'm not, I, I am sort of being critical, but, you know, all these things are made at trade-offs. It's just, like I said, to me, there's a little bit of element of catch-22. It's like, hey, you, you lived in a car, in your car in San Carlos for a year and you managed not to get caught by the chief. But, and now you get a preference, okay?
Well, you wouldn't, you'd have to address the whole thing.
I think the idea was that some people are renters and, you know, they've been priced out of their rental unit or...
I get, I get that point.
You know, something's happened, a remodel or reconstruction of a building they've lost. Other people grew up in San Carlos and they are moving out for the first time. But I think to your point, council member, if, if there weren't people qualifying for that preference, then we would just go down to those truly newcomers to, to town. They aren't excluded from qualifying for a BMR. It's just that we'd be giving preference to those living in. And quite frankly, they're, I'm sure if you looked at the list, people that are working here would probably be a larger category than...
Yeah, I mean, the, the last sort of comment, if, that's why to me, if it were, if it were me, I would have focused more on just, are you working here? And have you worked here for more than some minimum period of time? Not whether you've, you've resided here or not.
Yeah, I would just note that, that all households need to meet the income criteria. So to the extent that there are households in San Carlos that meet those income criteria, you know, those might be households that are sort of at the edge of being able to no longer afford to live here. And so it's sort of a way to be able to retain those, those households in the community.
Okay. Mr. Collins, how you can have a question, but anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only question I had is, it occurred to me that when we put all these numbers together, I don't remember us talking about adjusting them for inflation. I mean, how do we review these? Do we, do we just do a periodic review or do, or is there some criteria, some best practices as they adjust them for inflation over a period of time? How does that work?
So, in terms of best practices, I would say, we didn't see anything strong in terms of, you know, this is a, a typical policy that cities use to adopt, to update their asset thresholds over time. The numbers that we used are tied to market-rate housing prices and then also the restricted sale price on a BMR unit. So you could construct an index to say, you know, so sort of this most straightforward way to do it is to say, okay, we'll adjust by CPI and then, you know, maybe you can think about it in a few years, whether or not you need to do a more, you know, sort of deep dive into how those numbers might have shifted. You could also do something a little more complicated where you construct an index based on housing price increases and, you know, look up how much housing costs have increased over time and decide whether or not you need to up those thresholds to account for how much somebody needs to afford a, a market-rate home.
So maybe although that's a way to go, I mean, we could also say, we're going to review this.
Yeah.
On a periodic basis.
Absolutely.
Annually, biannually, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Only question I had, Bob.
Great. It's a good question. All right, no other questions. I do have one speaker card. This isn't a public hearing, but we do have, allow people to speak, obviously. Andrea Germaine, or is it Jermani? I'm not sure which. Welcome.
Andrea Germaine, and I've been a resident of San Carlos for 52 years. I'm currently employed full-time at a school and have been there for 18 years. Since 2009, I've been on the below-market-rate list with the City of San Carlos. Not until recently have there been so many new developments in San Carlos, so I've been hopeful that I would finally be able to purchase a below-market-rate home in the city that I have lived and lived in for the past five decades. I've been in contact via email with members of the planning division over the past couple of years and was encouraged that finally I would be able to purchase a condominium in one of the developments that are currently under construction, particularly 777 Walnut and the Chestnut Cherry property. In October, I received an email from the Economic Development Coordinator with the income qualifications for the BMR units and was surprised to learn that the one-bedroom units will only be offered to individuals that fall into the very low-income category. I don't understand why the income limits are so restrictive and don't include any units with a low or moderate income level. I am hopeful that the city will reconsider the income qualification criteria and offer BMR units to households with low and moderate income levels. I'm here tonight because I'm feeling frustrated with the lack of concrete guidelines and hopeful to get answers for the purchase requirements required to purchase a moderate BMR unit. This is my sister, Maria.
Maria Tackett. Also, now I'm a resident of Menlo Park. Grew up in San Carlos, moved in 1968, went to Britton Acres, Terra Linda, San Carlos High School, now live in Menlo Park and purchased a BMR unit in Menlo Park 18 years ago. So trying to help my sister maneuver the guidelines with San Carlos and feeling a little frustrated because it doesn't seem there's any concrete answers as to really what specific guidelines there are as far as income, assets, now we're talking about the new assets. We had talked with Mr. Johnson, we also talked with Mark, we had a meeting, and kind of learned that the two developments that we were kind of looking at, which my sister is renting in San Carlos, Elm Street, was there is, I think, 20?
Well, there's seven BMR units between the 777...
Right.
777 Walnut and the Chestnut Cherry, there's seven BMR units.
But thinking that maybe she would qualify and she's been on the list for...
Since 2009.
2009 and is probably in the top 10, but would not qualify because they're going to be below...
For the very low...
Very, very low income.
Making $43,000.
So when we were talking with Mark and we're saying, well, the other units, what are, what are they going to be priced at? And you were saying probably over a million dollars. So what are the below-market going to be? And, and who's going to qualify for that? So I guess it's a little frustrating because my sister would like to stay in San Carlos, has been here for 52 years, has saved, have some kind of down payment, has worked for Menlo School for 18 years. But is this an option? Is this going to happen? Or is it time to look at moving out of the area?
Maybe we could have some answers to that. We'll see.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ladies. Mr. Seve, or Martin, you want to speak to that, please? It's probably more complicated than we think, but appreciate it if you could define it a little bit more.
Certainly. One of the issues is the lack of units. One, we haven't had a lot of units built over the last few years. When units get built, usually they're built at an established level of income. For instance, for apartments, let's say at the Transit Village, we said they would all be at the moderate level, but they're apartment, they're rental, they're not for sale. So there's very few for-sale units that are being created in our community in the last few years. And so that's one of the problems. If you're looking to buy one, you know, it's limited by the number of units that are available and then it's limited by the income levels that are established at the time of approval of that development project.
So I guess the question is, I, I get that and I think most of us get that. So I guess the question is, what criteria, and again, I don't mean to be sharp-shooting here, but what criteria, let's say when 777 Walnut was, why was, let's say there was lower or middle or whatever, is there a certain criteria that goes into the, how do you decide, okay, this is going to be all low, this is going to be minimal? I think that's what the ladies are asking.
When a developer submits their applications for a development, they must also submit a below-market-rate plan where they articulate the unit characteristics in the project. And as part of being compliant with the BMR regulations that we've adopted, you have to build more of a certain type of unit or you can pay a higher in-lief fee.
Right, we're not talking about in-lifts, please. Who decides whether they're below-market, medium-market, above-market? In other words, there, how many units in 777 are, are, are on the program? 10, 5?
Just about.
5 to 10, okay. Who decided? Some were extreme low, some were moderate, some were, how does that work?
The developer submitted a proposal.
So the developer decides?
The developer submits a proposal that we review.
Okay.
But the developer also, some developers will try to get tax credits to have certain unit constructions. In this particular project, that's how the developer submitted their plans and it was accepted at that time.
So for the most part, though, we, we pretty much accept what they ask for? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to put, put it on you, I'm just asking a question. For the most part, unless there's something outrageous, if they say we want five, five units to be extremely low and two to be moderate, we'll go, okay, that sounds right?
Well, we have... Martin, let me jump in here if, if I may.
I'm sorry. Didn't mean to jump on you, Martin.
That's okay. In, in the past, the council has made those decisions from time to time based on typically the data that the staff shows you will be what the inventory of units in town are so that you can see. And I think in our town, in, in some of the recent years, when we've seen that data, the, the very low and low levels were where we had the greatest need and the, and the greatest lack of units. And so I know over the last couple of years, the council has been sensitive to that issue and trying to raise that, that number stock. But in the past, also, you've had developments that have come in where you've gone with the moderate level, so those units have been created as well. The other issue that Martin was touching on has to do with whether or not these projects get financed at all and even built. So you have any units. And sometimes in order to make that financing work and to qualify for the, the tax credits that are out there to bring these deals together to create affordable housing, you have to go with lower levels. And that's sometimes where the developers come in and they say, well, you know, it's this or I can't do the project.
I understand. So to try to answer your question, it's complicated, what's new there? But it, it really depends on a myriad of, of things. I know, being, Matt and I have been on here for a long time and I remember that we had a shortage, as Mr. Malpe just reminded me, of, of extremely low and, and low-income ones. And we, and the council at that time decided that we needed to up those up. So we needed to have more of those units as opposed to the moderate ones. So it's a timing thing and it's complicated by, as he explained, that what the developer does and what also the city tries to do. So it's not an easy, it's not easy where you just put a button on it and it automatically happens, unfortunately. If you want to come up and speak, just for, you've already gone over the time, way over, but I'll let you...
I'm just curious, though. Just...
Please, would you, please, just, just, just be quiet until you come up and then you're fine.
In the future, does the City of San Carlos foresee building more for a moderate income? Is that something? I mean, I, I've, I've read your reports. I saw your 2015, that you're building so many projects. We've talked about the, all the...
Ma'am, speak to us, please.
Speak, all the rentals.
Sure.
Which below-market is going to be 2,000 a month for a rental. But I'm just curious, is, do you really foresee, you know, something for moderate?
I don't see, I mean, I'm just talking personally. I don't know where, I don't know any large developments are going to go in. There's going to be spot developments that are going to go in. Four units here, six units here, 10 units there. I don't know if there's any large projects that are going to be going in. I'll be honest with you because most of the property's been taken, taken on the big side. I could be wrong tomorrow.
Right.
But, you know, it's, it's a matter normally on the west side and I don't see any large pieces that are available. However, people could accumulate them. You know, and so it's, it's hard for us to say, yeah, there's going to be so many extra units. We, we're planning for possibly having more units, but we don't know where those are going to be, if they ever are.
So really, so the people that are a moderate income, who have some money saved for a down payment, that can maybe, maybe afford...
Yes.
If it's going to be a below-market of $400,000, can afford to have the down payment and have the income to support a mortgage. So that's all I'm saying. I'm just sad to see that, you know, that those people are being priced out.
What we're trying to do is, going on, as Mr. Malpe said...
I understand.
We're trying to, trying to help as many people as we can in all areas.
Right.
And that's difficult. Go ahead, Jeff, you want to say something?
Yeah, in the last year, the council has created a new revenue stream to fund affordable housing, a commercial linkage fee, so that in the future, when large office developments come in, commercial developments, they'll have to pay a large fee that will go directly towards creating housing. The city doesn't build housing. We're a city, we're not a developer. So we have to partner with developers that are out there, nonprofits that are out there to build the housing.
I understand.
So it's, it's a difficult process. But we do have units that are moderate units that are currently owned by somebody all the time that come back to us, you know? And then we put them back on the market.
I know, there was just one recently.
So there, there's always hope and, and the city council's making every effort. The governor signed new legislation just in the last week to help facilitate more affordable housing. It's been a major priority of the city council and will continue to be. But unfortunately, it's one of those priorities that's not entirely up to us and it is a slow, frustrating process. So we very much sympathize with where you're at and we hope that you hang in there with the city and that, that it happens for you. But there's only so much we can do.
So I guess then, would you feel hopeful that my sister has been on the list for nine years and is probably in the first, you know, top 10? So would you be hopeful and, and think there's a possibility or is it time to look at other places to live?
I'd like to ask Mr. Seve what the, I don't know how...
I don't know. I'm just curious.
I don't know how the numbers...
I don't think there's any way for us to answer that question at the staff level.
It all depends on who wants to build. If all of a sudden tomorrow we have a recession, nobody's building anything. So I could say, yeah, it'll be next year and all of a sudden, nobody's going to build anything. So I can't, I can't promise you that. I can't, I can't guarantee it. I wish I could. If I could, I'd get the crystal ball out.
But I, I congratulate the City of San Carlos. After moving here in 1965, building is insane. I mean, there is building all over. I mean, it's, it's not becoming a small town, it's a huge town.
So I'm just curious, the, the, the seven BMR units that are coming up on 777 Walnut and the Chestnut Cherry, can you tell me, out of those seven, are they all going to be below, like, low-income, moderate, or has that been decided?
Martin, do you know?
There won't be any moderate.
Martin, if you're going to talk, you have to come to the microphone.
We don't expect there to be any moderate income units in those two developments I mentioned. There will be some in Transit Village, but those will be apartments.
Okay, all right. Thank you for coming. All right. Gentlemen, what do you want to do?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash...
90.
90?
Yeah, 9-0.
Oh. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos adopting policies to guide the below-market-rate housing program eligibility and preference criteria.
Second.
Right, moved in second, a discussion?
If...
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I very much appreciate staff and the subcommittee's work on this. I think as you probably picked up from some of my questions, like always happens, I personally might choose things a little differently, but this certainly looks like a reasonable tweak to the rules that we have. The main comment I want to make is, and actually it's kind of apropos of what the, the two most recent speakers have brought up. While I applaud this work and it was necessary and important to do, there's also part of me that views this a little bit like rearranging deck chairs on, on the Titanic, okay, to sort of figure out who's the best person to sit where, okay? The problem is, as we all know, that there's not enough, housing is just a huge crisis in, in the peninsula and particularly in San Carlos. And I've said before, I just would really love to see us be at the forefront of being as creative as we can about figuring out ways to try and help address the problem, which may or may not always involve building stuff in San Carlos. Maybe it involves grants and building stuff outside of San Carlos, but that's still near enough that people can, in our community, can benefit from it. So great work, glad we're doing it, but I hope we don't lose track of the real problem, which is, the ship is going down and we need to fix that.
Okay, Mr. Grocott.
I'm really torn on how to vote on this. I'm thinking of, just if I may, just abstaining because I do not support these programs. They are a lottery system, as you can see here. You got someone that's trying to get something and maybe they win the lottery and maybe they don't in terms of, you know, because we're trying to create units through working with developers, as the city manager said, and it can't be enough. Mark gave the picture of the Titanic. I was sitting here thinking, this is like trying to shoot an elephant with a pea shooter and the elephant's running through a maze. You just can't keep up with it. Ultimately, I think what this comes down to is a lack of proper zoning. And we zone for too much commercial and we allow companies like Facebook and the others, I'm not saying they're bad companies, but they come in and they have workers who they can pay really well because that's what their business model is. They have people that come here from, on visas and so forth, who, you know, they say what you want about that. It's impacting, you know, personally. I know in my situation, it's really difficult even staying here. But, you know, bottom line for me, if the government, government's supposed to do things where they treat people equitably and equally, not, you know, special things for certain people. And so I just, on principle, can't support this, so I...
All right. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We could get into a long discussion about that, but what I wanted to say is, particularly to our, the two ladies that came and spoke, is that this is a problem that's been brewing for a long time. We are a small town, trying to do a lot of things. There is some hope on the horizon. I think the city manager alluded to the fact that the governor signed new legislation. San Mateo County has also made a lot of money available through Measure K and also loans to organizations like Heart to provide affordable housing. It's a long, slow process, and like the mayor said, there's no guarantees of when that housing will be available. But after having served on several housing committees for the last four or five years, this is the most optimistic I've been in, since I began, that there is now finally the funding that's being made available. It's going to take a while for it to get off the ground, but if you look around this county, only 25% of the real estate in this county is developable. The rest of it is occupied by either open space or agriculture. So that's, you know, we don't have, you know, if there's not much more buildable room, particularly for, for sale housing. Most of the new housing that's going to be built is going to be rental housing and, because that is the type of housing that you can fit more people into. It's just, unfortunately, it's just the way it is. But as the mayor said, there's a lot of redevelopment slowly happening in the area between, you know, Cedar Street and El Camino, you know, what I would call the apartment community. Some of those are going to be rebuilt as apartments, some of them are rebuilt with condominiums. Most of them will have more units. But it's not just a San Carlos problem, it's a regional problem. And I don't, I don't want to tell anybody who look for housing outside of San Carlos who wants to live here, but it's difficult, being in the small town we're in. We're small geographically, we're small in terms of population. We're doing everything we can and so are neighboring cities. So at some point, that housing may be there. I wish I could just promise you tomorrow that we'd have a unit, but it's not easy and it's going to be a while before we were able to add significantly to the housing stock, at least in our town.
Okay, are there any other comments? Otherwise, I'll call the question. City clerk, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mary Grace Lee?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of eight. 9A, council members' reports on subcommittees, regional boards, commissions, committees. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything to report in terms of my activities, as I was on vacation, but I would like to bring up something that I think that, I would like the council to consider. As you all know, the fire tower is either about to be or in the process of being demolished, and it's right next door to the San Carlos museum. The museum building is owned by the city and it houses a lot of valuable archives, old newspapers, it's got a lot of San Carlos history there. And I discovered recently that while it's a beautiful building, it's not sprinklered, which is sort of ironic in that it sits next to the fire station. And so what I would like us to do is maybe have staff give us a report on what it would cost to sprinkler that building, because I'd hate to see a fire happen there and destroy much of what the history is and this, where the history of the city is stored.
Other people chiming in on that?
I'd be happy to have staff prepare such a report and bring it back to us.
Hey, Ronan, have you talked to staff about it at this point?
I have.
And what's it say?
And Jeff said he...
It's certainly something that we can bring back for the council. You know, if there's an interest, it's probably something that we would include in, maybe in the capital budget for council to consider. It would be a relatively small-level project.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. So if staff could prepare that, then for probably the first quarter?
All right, thank you.
All right. Mr. Grocott.
After our last meeting where we had staff present helping a city near Houston, and then we had a discussion about the fires up north, I gave that some more thought and talked to the city manager about what we might be able to do for the long term, because from my experience with going down to Past Christian, that was about a two-and-a-half-year rebuilt project. And people who went initially, like Fred Kohler, who went on one of the earlier trips, it was about cleanup. There was no building going on, but there was a lot of cleanup. And the thing that I can see happening is that, you know, while now people are, you know, exercised about what's going on up there and giving a lot of food and clothing and that sort of thing, as we get down the road, it, you know, with things happening, people can tend to forget. And I thought what we might want to do is, without spending too much of the staff's time, but to have something where we could gather and organize data on people who want to volunteer and create a portal that the North Bay cities could reach into in order to access those people who have, who want to volunteer and have certain skills. The city manager can certainly chime in here later, but that's something that I was thinking about and I would like to at least see that we have a discussion about something like that on the dais at our next meeting.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we be able to just put it in, like, all the website, the thing you send out, Shape, San Carlos, all the rest of it? Just something like that, as simple as that?
Yeah, in terms of marketing, the volunteer opportunity, yes. I think, you know, my thought, I've had the opportunity to talk with Matt about this idea a couple of times now over the last week, and what we thought we would do at the staff level is reach out to some of the nonprofits. I know the cities up there are still pretty busy with the actual disaster, but reach out to some of the nonprofits to find out, you know, what are the, what do they anticipate to be some of the needs of the Napa-Sonoma area over the coming years, as Matt said, so we could understand that. And then basically just look to create a clearinghouse where we could collect that data from our community and make it available to nonprofits or local governments in the North Bay to access as those needs come up. And if we're very successful in creating it, it might be a model then that we can actually pass on to our neighboring jurisdictions around San Mateo County and throughout the Bay Area so that they could do the same in their community, you know, and then potentially it would be something that would, could then be put on the shelf and brought back up if there's a future disaster somewhere else, so...
I have to admit, I'm a little bit confused because I thought, when we had that discussion and the agenda item about possibly adopting a city in Houston, I thought we, that's where we ended up, is we said we wanted staff to put something like that together. I think it sounds like a good idea. My only concern, which we're not concerned, but issue as I brought up at the, when we were talking about the Houston situation, I definitely, I feel for the people in Northern California who are recovering from those terrible, terrible fires. I also feel for the people in Houston and Florida and Puerto Rico. They are all, and yes, I suppose there's lots of other disasters around the world that I could point to as well. Personally, I draw the circle as, they're all Americans. Past Christian was not in California, okay? And we did a lot to help it and I'm glad we did. So I guess the only comment I'd make is, if it doesn't make the program too large, I would say, I thought what we said was, do exactly what Jeff just said for kind of all of the recent disasters that have happened here in America.
I think in terms of the marketing, you're right on. I think there's very similar parallels to what the council just told us in this particular item. I think the difference here is, you know, we're probably very unlikely to be a significant source of volunteers for a disaster in Florida or Texas as opposed to something, you know, closer to us, where we may be a contributor of goods and money for those other disasters, but less likely a significant source of volunteers. And here, we see ourselves as a potential significant source of volunteers.
Okay. Mr. Obert, you got some comments, other comments?
Yes, I do. I had one, which I had been meaning to bring up and apropos of, I noticed this evening that somebody had written us a letter about the same issue, so it was sort of a good reminder. I don't know if anybody else has noticed it, but in my walking around downtown, I've seen on more than one occasion, the little parklet situation that we allowed town to set up outside of their restaurant has the unfortunate side effect on occasion of effectively blocking the sidewalks, because there'll be some event at town and people are just spilling over the sidewalks. And I know in one instance, I think it was an Ed Foundation fundraiser, I timed it just out of curiosity, and it took me about five minutes to get from one side of town to the other on the sidewalk, okay? And I don't know what, you know, the city's rules and approaches are for dealing with this, but I don't know how much other support there is for this on the dais, but my understanding is when we did that experimental program for allowing the parklets to be created, I don't think we gave approval to, and feel free to block the sidewalks whenever you feel like it. And so I'd like to, you know, sort of say, however it gets handled, this issue needs to get addressed and somebody needs to understand, don't block the sidewalks.
Well, I agree with you. I had a letter from there and I think it's, I mean, maybe Mr. Malpey, we can have Mr. Sevei or whomever, not necessarily code enforcement, but somebody from the staff just talk to the management and say, look, this is, we understand you have large groups sometimes and that's great, but you can't spill over, you can't, it's not in your personal section. And if it continues, then we can certainly pull the, pull the parklet out. You know, I mean, I agree with you. I think what happens is, is that people fill vacuums and there's a vacuum there. And so, you know, for special events, I haven't noticed it, when I've walked, you know, on regular Sundays or whatever, I haven't noticed people spilling out. There's always been a walkway, but if you have a special event, that's different.
And I forgot to add along the lines of what you're saying, at least in my experience, every time that I've been in the city council booth at Farmer's Market, there's always at least one person who comes up to me to complain about this.
Yeah.
So it's an issue, and I understand, by the way, why a business doesn't like to go out to its customers and say, hey, would you please get off the sidewalk? But that's part of their responsibility, so...
I think a good reminder once in a while would be, wouldn't be bad at all. Okay. Staff comments?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, if there's nothing else, gentlemen, adjourned. 10 o'clock.